Good evening, everyone. My name is Mayor Ted Betancourt and tonight is the regular school committee meeting at the Higgins Middle School today being May 22, 2018. Tonight's meeting is being recorded by the PBD School Committee's Recording Secretary, Leanna Harris, and it's also being broadcast live on PAT. The matters listed on our agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. I'd like to first start off with a moment of silence. And the PBD school community, the city of PBD has had a couple of heartbreaking tragic losses in our community. The first being Eileen Bresnahan, who has been our longtime serving Director of Busing and Transportation, recently passed away at too early of an age. And I'd like you to keep her family in your thoughts during our moment of silence. And also, I'd like to ask you to keep in your thoughts Molly, Jack, and Reed Foster, who had the heartbreaking loss of their daughter and sister, Mackenzie. I'd ask you to keep those. If everybody could just please stand for a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. And now, we're going to turn over to Dr. Levine, who's going to introduce two of our wonderful, amazing students from the West Elementary School. Dr. Levine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fifth grader Joshua Darling is a role model student who enjoys reading and writing. He is currently on his third Hunger Games novel. Joshua enjoys playing basketball as an extracurricular activity, and he plays for the PBA, the Y, and of course, the West Wildcats. Joshua was also a clarinet soloist in the winter fifth grade instrumental concert. Welcome, Joshua. How many of you would like to have us here? Yeah. (laughter) Fifth grader Kamra Zoot Kar is an inspirational student. She does everything with her best effort. On the basketball court, she is a fast athlete, and in the classroom, she always wants to challenge herself to know more. She is a student who is caring and motivates others to want to be the best that they can be. Welcome, Kamra Zoot. (applause)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done. And thank you, parents. We much appreciate you being here. I'd also like to introduce Mr. Nick Cola, who is the principal of the West School and is here this evening to support the children. Thank you.
So now, we will go to the public hearing on the 2019 fiscal year, school department budget. And before we go to Dr. Levine for his report and open it up for any public hearing, I did want to make a few comments. I've been concerned that in the reporting of the newspapers, and I just want to make sure it's very clear where our school budget stands, because I think it was misleading the newspaper articles, and particularly the headlines stating that we are cutting our school budget by $6.4 million. That is not true. It's actually furthest from the truth. Last year's budget was $71,894,793. This year, it's being proposed at $73,710,393. So it's an increase of $1,815,000, which is almost 3 percent. Last year, we increased the budget 1.6 million. The way it was reported, I thought, was misleading. We still have the same amount, but because of increased costs, specifically a 9.9 percent increase in health insurance, our collective bargaining obligations, steps and lanes, and the 2 percent raise, which I think our teachers more than deserve, because of those cost increases in special education, transportation, and some other costs, we've had to reallocate that money, that $6.4 million. So certainly, we are not cutting $6.4 million from our budget. That would never happen. However, we've added 1.8 million, but still, because of those additional costs, we've had to work hard to try to figure out the best way to utilize that money in light of some of these difficult, difficult increases. And it's certainly been school-wide, just to give everybody a perspective, what we've been wrestling with on the city end, and we're close to wrapping up our budget. We had, I think many of you are familiar with, we had our Coolidge Water Treatment Plant had a fire, and it burned to the ground and became a total loss. Well, the city of PBD, we have, I think, among the very lowest water and sewer rates in the state, but we are unable to produce water at the Coolidge Water Treatment Plant, which takes about 70 percent of the city, addresses our water needs. We've had to, in the meantime, over the past year, a little over a year, we've had to take our water from the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority, the MWRA, and it's come at a significant cost. We are looking at over $2.5 million that we're going to have to pay to the MWRA sometime this summer, and that is a, that's certainly a big number, and it was not budgeted for, obviously, last year, being unaware of the fire. So that's a bill that has to be paid. And just to give you some perspective as to how it impacts your tax dollars, every million-dollar increase to the budget is about $40 an increase to your tax rate. Just to kind of, that's the basic number. So a 2.5 percent, $2.5 million increase hurts. Hurts us quite a bit. And it's been disappointing, because we've met with state officials to try to see if we could get some assistance. Towns nearby, a big town that, next door, that begins with the letter L, just got $19 million on a very low interest rate to help them out of their budget needs. City of PBD, we have this, which was certainly a, something we weren't expecting or planned for, and we sought to pay off that loan, or get a loan from a local lender, pay off that 2.5 million, maybe over five years, with some interest, and we were denied that request. And that went to the highest levels in Massachusetts, which was kind of frustrating, that we couldn't get that assistance. And I feel like sometimes we're punished, because, you know, we are, we're financially, we handle our money, I think, pretty well compared to other cities and towns. But certainly, all of our departments, because of that additional 2.5, because of the 9.9 percent increase within the health insurance, which runs about $2 million to the city, our collective bargaining obligations, and I do believe that our teachers and our police officers and our firefighters deserve a cost of living raise, which is 2 percent, that's been collectively bargained, but also increases to our retirement, increases to our water and sewer. So that's what's kind of put some stress on us this year, and that 2.5 put even more stress on us this year than it has in years past. So certainly, it's made it very difficult for all of our city budgets, each police, fire, our public safety, our DPW, our library. We've all kind of had to tighten our belts. Where I don't like to take a step back is in education. And although we've had to make some difficult choices, some difficult cuts today, it's important for me that we continue to move forward. I have three children in our school system right now. I'm going to have another one coming up in a few years. It's important for me to make sure that our city is moving forward as best we can, and that we try to as best we can to meet the needs of our students, but also recognizing that there are tax ramifications and things that we can't prepare for, like with this recent fire. I do think we've made some great investments over the last few years in our school system, most notably the building where we're now standing. I can without question say we have the best middle school in the state of Massachusetts. $92 million, it's a biggest investment we've ever made in our community, and that's something I'm very proud of. We've made major investments at our high school, redoing the cafeteria, the athletic fields, the auditorium, and we've had projects at the McCarthy School, Burke School, and the Welch School in recent years. Thing I'm very proud of, that we've worked together on, has been our investment in technology. This year, and I don't know if there's any other school systems that I can think of outside of Burlington, which is usually, Burlington is very advanced, we will have every student from sixth to 12th grade will have their own Chromebook. It's our one-to-one initiative. I would put that up against any city or town in their school system. That's something that we've worked hard for, we've budgeted for. It was a big investment on our part, but we felt that needed to be done. Right now, what we're working on, and it's very difficult to talk about, and I can't get into specifics with you, but we are going to be making a major investment in school security. Now, I am not putting that in this budget. I'm putting that through our capital investment, so you will not see anything in this budget about school security. That is going to the city council. I think within the next couple of weeks, we're doing our capital along with our budget, but there is going to be significant money spent on school security at all of our schools. Doors, locks, cameras. We've added an additional police officer at the high school, and also some infrastructure work to some of our school buildings to make sure that they're a bit more secure. That is going to be taking place, but that is not in this budget, that is going to be going through capital. We try to use the capital at times to assist with our school needs. Most recently, last year, when we went to our capital request, we put forward our whole new science curriculum, which is about $550,000. Typically, that would be put in our school budget, but we made a decision to put that into capital, to kind of allow for more flexibility to invest in our schools. So we put that on the city side, but it was a $550,000 investment. We went with the FOS program, which I think is paying major dividends going forward, and that's a K through 10 program. I'm very happy about that. We're also looking next into social studies, which is, I know, a curriculum that we're examining now. So, difficult budget, as always. I feel like that's something every year that has to be said, but this year, because of the fire, it put even more stress on all of us. So I did want to make those opening comments. Very difficult, I'm very proud to work with the men and women on this board, because it is difficult and challenging, and there's a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of care and goes into it. All of us here either went to the school system, or all have kids in the school system now. And I think all of us care deeply for the education of our community, and we're trying as best we can to make it work for all of us. But believe me, we care for your kids, and I, again, to go back, I was disappointed in how it was portrayed in the newspaper. If you take the headline, "We're Cutting $6.4 Million," and again, that will never, ever, ever happen going forward. Certainly, that is, that would never happen. So I wanted to turn it over to Dr. Levine. I know he had a couple of statements to make, and then I wanted to open it up for the public hearing, and I appreciate everyone just allowing me those few minutes to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind the citizenry of PBD how supportive the school committee and past school committees that I've been around have been for the school department over the past few years. We opened a health clinic at PBD High School. We could not have done it without the support of the mayor and the school committee. This health clinic has two therapists for mental health issues for our students and a drug intervention counselor. I believe that we're the only high school that I know of that has an actual full-time drug intervention counselor on site. That was done with the funds and with the support of this school committee and this The school committee also committed itself a couple of years ago to making certain that every single school in the school district had an adjustment counselor. That was not the case when I first came here. As a matter of fact, in most cases, the schools were sharing adjustment counselors. Now, we have an adjustment counselor full-time in every building. That is also directed and targeted for the mental health of our students. The, some of the areas of reduction, I want to explain to you, and I'll choose which ones that I want to talk about, and then anybody that wants to talk about anything else that's on the sheet, I can explain, hopefully. This last sheet of reductions is the fourth iteration of the reductions. This doesn't just happen. This happens after multiple meetings. I begin with my very strong management team at Central Office. We build a budget the way that we think we're going to need to build a budget and still be able to move forward. It then spreads to the principals, who are very important in the discussion of budgeting and what their priorities are. I put together a first iteration of a budget with the reductions that we knew we would have to make, bring it to the school committee and the mayor, and they give me instructions as to what it is their priorities are, and to please go back and make sure, make sure that their priorities are met. So for example, I know that classroom teachers are a huge concern in this audience and in the community. The original number that I floated was 12 teachers to reduce. We have stayed with 10. Every single one of these teaching positions will either be retirements or non-renewals. There will not be one face that we want to keep in the school system who will lose a job. We have made that commitment. We have made that promise. The reductions in the high school, there were five, plus a guidance counselor, are due to numbers. When I came here in 2011, we had 1,850 students at the high school. Today, we will open, we'll probably open in September with fewer than 1,400. So by common sense, we had to reduce teachers over a period of time to reflect the lower numbers. There will not be one program that is disbanded because of the reduction in positions. There were school systems, for example, that cut foreign languages. There were school systems that cut math offerings. There were school systems that cut social studies electives. We will not be doing that. We will be servicing the kids that are coming to the high school, even with the reduced number of teaching positions. At the elementary level, there will be some slight impact on class sizes. I went through every class size that we projected at the elementary school with the school committee this evening, every class in every building. I first this afternoon made sure that my numbers were correct by calling and speaking with every principal. No one likes to reduce positions, especially me. But over the past four years that I've been here, we have added probably 25 positions in this school system with the support and the funding of the school committee. Every time we needed a class size split because of high, two high class sizes, particularly K1 and 2, we split it. Last year, for example, at the McCarthy School, there was no room to split a class. I went down and spoke with the principal. We did something that we didn't want to do, but we took half the library, built a classroom in order to split a kindergarten class that was just too high. The school committee has supported those kinds of moves all the, all through the four years that I've been here. So yes, this is a reduction of positions, but over the past four years, we are still to the good with probably 10 to 15 positions that we've added. I wanted to talk about custodians. The original number was five. In the first iteration of this budget, we are now down to one reduction of custodians, and that custodian position is not presently filled, so it will simply be by attrition. The original number of the library paraprofessionals was totally reducing them to zero. We have been able to put back half of the library para hours, so that every library para will still have their hours, but they will be reduced as opposed to eliminated. Paraprofessionals, the original iteration of the budget had five paraprofessionals being reduced. Today, it's one, and that position will be eliminated based upon attrition. We have had a number of paraprofessional resignations, as we do every year. The maintenance craftsman actually was cut last year, and we're making sure that it stays a cut this year. There is no one in that position right now. Various other, the PANS stipend, I wrote the PANS program when I was here in 2011 and got the PANS program approved by the school committee. I hired its director, the same director who is there today, and he hired the two teachers who have been on board since. We are cutting the equivalent of one teaching position. That's the NITE program, by the way, for those of you who don't know, for students who don't make it very well at the high school. We have a couple of alternative programs. This is one of them. It's the smaller one of the two programs that we have. And at this point, we are not justifying two teachers due to the numbers that we have typically in the PANS program, but I know that Ms. Mertag, as superintendent, will look at this again in November and talk with the director to make certain that we were thinking right. If we're not, Ms. Mertag will come back to this board and ask for that position to be restored. Now, it's only a $17,000 position, and I know that you might think that's a small amount of money, but it all does add up when you have to get to a balanced budget, and we were looking for $6.2 million to reassign because of the increases that we have driving the budget. There are some clerical positions that will be reduced. There is one clerical position that will be eliminated. And up top, which are non, or non-teaching positions, or non-clerical positions, non-personnel positions, those reductions, for example, in supplies, I'm cutting $500,000. $500,000 is the equivalent of eight teachers. Now, I'm cutting $500,000, not because we don't value supplies, but because we value teaching positions more. It's a $1.3 million budget line. We will have $800,000 in supplies, and nobody will go with what, with what they, without what they need. I am also asking my principals, who are very good at hoarding, they have supplies, to share. There are some buildings that have more supplies than others, and we talked about that at a recent administrative meeting, and my principals immediately started saying, if you need ink, if you need paper, there are things in the schools that we can do better with for one year. That line item has been healthy ever since I've been here. It can stand a one-year reduction. We have to add by contract a new cluster at the Higgins. Mr. Busey has been extremely creative in being able to handle two of the teachers that are needed in the budget without impacting our budget, and we will fund two new teachers to complete that cluster. That is by contract, teacher's contract. We have a large fifth grade coming in and a small eighth grade going out. By contract, we would go over the numbers if we didn't add a cluster that is allowed in the contract. So we have to foot that bill, and that's $140,000. For any of you who either teach at the Brown or know of the Brown, you know how complex the Brown School is. It's an extraordinarily complex building. We are also losing a longtime veteran principal to retirement in that building, so we'll be hiring a new principal. It is time, and we've talked about this before at this table, to hire a full-time assistant principal instead of a part-time assistant principal. The total cost will be about $65,000, because we already have half of that money budgeted. We need that position. We've needed it for some time. The programs that are in that building are the most challenging and difficult programs in the school district. It's time to invest in a full-time assistant principal. We have a grant rollover of $50,000 that is helping to offset this budget. We have a kindergarten grant that we're hoping will pass the state legislature, much to the, many thanks to Andrew Anotis and Representative Tom Walsh, who asked me what I needed. I drew it up, and we believe that it stands a good chance at passing. We're hoping for that, and I know that Tom and our other, Teddy Spiliottis and Joan Lovely are working on this all the time to make sure that we get this $100,000. Some of you may remember about 10 or 15 years ago, we had kindergarten reduction, class reduction grants, and we could hire new kindergarten teachers every year in order to keep class sizes down. They went away, as state grants do. This grant was written specifically for PBD, and we're hoping that we get that grant. Special Ed circuit breaker, again, due to the good work of our representatives and our state senator, Andrew, through his office, have supported an increase in special Ed circuit breakup. That means that after a certain amount of money that we spend on a student, we receive reimbursement for a certain percentage of that cost. We believe that with the new percentage that the state is talking about, that we will gain $200,000 from what we projected, taking the offsets. Taking the offsets, taking the hires, which are extremely limited, and taking the reductions, we have got to the budget number of $6.2 million, which will still be an increase of almost $2 million from what we're working with now. Again, the biggest budget drivers this year, going into next year, would be special education, particularly tuitions. We had a good year the year before. We didn't have such a fortunate year this year. Health insurance, and of course contractual raises, step and track movement, et cetera. And that, Mr. Mayor, is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Levine. I wanted to give the opportunity, we have a large crowd, if there's anyone that would like to come forward and be heard, I wanted to provide that opportunity to you now. We have the table here in front. We just ask that you introduce yourself, your name and address, and because of the large crowd, I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak. I'd like to try to keep it to just a couple of minutes, please. Please, come on up.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Maureen Connor, and I'm a speech-language pathologist at the Brown School. I work with children in both the Milestones Program, which is for children of low cognition, and children in the Connections Program, which is our program for children on the autism spectrum. I'm here tonight to ask for funding, to reestablish some classrooms that we had at the Brown up until this year. Presently, we have a substantially separate autism spectrum disorder classroom, and this year, we implemented a new classroom model for our children on the spectrum, which is a full-inclusion co-taught model. Each grade has a classroom that is co-taught simultaneously by a regular education teacher and a special education teacher. Our children on the spectrum, who do not require the substantially separate classroom, have been integrated into these co-taught, full-inclusion classrooms, and we've seen much success with this model. However, we've also realized that there are children on the autism spectrum whose needs are not able to be met by either of these models. These children struggle to maintain self-control and attention within classrooms that demand a high level of communication and academic participation. Last year, we had classrooms that would be considered a bridge between the self-contained and the full-inclusion classrooms. It combined both small group instruction for areas of specific needs, such as academics, social-emotional development, and behavior, and also allowed for opportunities for integration into a regular classroom setting throughout their school day. Our current programs offer the extreme ends of the spectrum of need, substantially separate or full inclusion. Experience tells us that there will always be children on the autism spectrum who fall within that middle range of need. Reestablishing these classrooms will allow these children the setting they need to progress academically, socially, and behaviorally, in order to become increasingly independent. Our ultimate goal for all of these children is to be able to access the full-inclusion co-taught model. I am asking for your help in funding these classrooms, because the children who need them cannot ask you themselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I just ask a question? Mr. Mayor, Maureen?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. That was wonderfully done. A couple of questions for you. Do we have room at the Brown School to create more classrooms?
I think we do. I think that Elaine would be the one to ask, but I think that we very well may.
Second question would be, have you discussed this with Elaine and Ruthie?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Maureen.
You're welcome.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Dr. Levine, Ms. Mertag, and members of the school committee. My name is Patty Curamus Ramstein, and I'm in my 25th year teaching in Peabody. I grew up here in this city. My family roots go way back to both sets of grandparents immigrating from Greece to work in the tanneries. My father building houses here where he named streets after me, my siblings, and my cousins. I am a product of our school system and proud to give back to the city in the career that I chose. I rise tonight to speak to the budget shortfall and the proposed cuts, specifically loss of teaching and para positions, taking two days' pay away from us, which, as we all know, is a bargaining item. $500,000 in supplies, $35,000 in PD funding. I have to renew my teaching license in a year. How am I going to meet the requirement for special ed PDPs? Yes, I can go out and spend my own money for a course, however, the city is required to provide those PD opportunities. I already spend enough of my family budget on school items. Never once in 25 years have I even been given a sticker to give to a child, and that's just one example. And never once in 25 years has my husband said, "Enough." Losing teaching positions and having increased class sizes is not in the best interest of our kids. Some of them are entering school with more needs and challenges than ever before. Not only do we help them meet their academic challenges, but we love them, nurture them, guide them, and give them the support that they are yearning for in the classroom. These kids need more individualized attention, differentiated instruction, small learning groups, and social instruction. If we have larger classes, how do we support them and really give them the attention needed to be and feel successful? A few years back, I was excited to hear of a neighboring city reducing class sizes in the early grades, and I thought, right on, and lucky them, that's what everybody should do. How do you think teachers feel when they hear of these cuts, especially our newer teachers? I know that feeling, because years ago, that was what we were faced with every year at budget time, and we would attend these meetings like this and fight for jobs. It is a feeling of stress, anxiety, worry, whether there will be a position or not. It has been a welcome relief when we didn't have these threats for a few years, and now we're back there. It has been told to us that it's only for this year. And we will get those two days' pay back, right? I think not. I wonder if the city is trying to balance the cost of getting the water treatment plant back online and on our backs. Proposing to take two days' pay away from teachers is not the way to balance a school budget. By telling us that if we do not accept that, 10 additional teachers will be laid off, feels and sounds extremely disrespectful of our contract and us, just like the calendar changes did a few years back. I would like to ask Mayor Bettencourt why the city's rainy day fund cannot be used to meet this deficit. I read in the Salem News, and I'm hoping it's accurate, how it was used for the fire department's overtime in the amount of $450,000. I also have a quote here from the Salem News article of May 8th, where Mayor Bettencourt is talking about the water plant, and he states, and I quote, "Our stabilization has been untouched for several decades, and now I believe we have finally had our rainy day, and it is time to use this reserve." Decades, imagine the amount that must be in that fund. This city has one of the lowest tax rates in the state of Massachusetts. I realize it has been raised a bit in recent years, and that we do have a large elderly population that we need to consider. The days of a level tax rate for years and years are over. I, for one, am tired of the lack of respect we receive as teachers. For years and years, we would wait and wait and wait for a contract proposal, sometimes two, three years without a new contract, and we would start our day, our school year, at the Elks Hall or the AOH so that we could talk about this. I ask you, are the police and fire taking a cut in their pay? I respectfully request that this committee and our mayor look at that rainy day fund for a viable solution to this issue. It's time to respect the talented professionals this city has in the front lines with our kids each day. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to come forward, please? Just ask them to make sure you speak into the mic, please. Welcome, Mr. Odessa.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brian Odessa. I reside at 26 Baudet Street here in Peabody. Good to see you all again. I find that I end up in these larger school committee meetings where there are very serious consequences on the line and very serious terms at stake. You know, I hear the talk about a correction to a newspaper article and the money being redistributed, not necessarily lost. When you say that all these positions that are being cut, the majority of these positions being cut, are cut due to attrition, where we're not hiring these positions back, that doesn't mean there's not that need. That doesn't mean that need still doesn't exist. You talk about the supplies, which is another huge issue for me and for the teachers that I know that work day-to-day with my kids and many others. That's boots on the ground, that's days in the classroom, that's where the real contact is made, that's where the real difference in growth is made. For those of you in here that don't know me, I've been an educator, a science teacher, curriculum coordinator, school administrator for a decade. I'm no longer in education, I'm a business owner now, but I do have two children myself in the school district and another one who's going to begin within a year, similar to Mr. Bettencourt here. When we start to play around with classroom sizes because of some of this attrition now, because we're losing some of these positions, you're saying that some of the census is shifting. We don't need maybe necessarily as many of these positions as we have right now, but what's to account for all of the people that continue to move into Peabody? I know that there are now housing developments that we're talking about at the city level in South Peabody and other places. You know, accounting for those things, I understand we go year to year here, but there needs to be some forethought, there needs to be some foresight that really hasn't been given. You know, we talk about other things that have happened in the past, we can't change them, we can't go back on a 35-year bond to a technical school, that money that could have been spent here in our own public district to work on our vocational programs. You know, these teachers that bleed to teach our kids, you know, these teachers that come to school sicker than most kids that we keep home so that they can continue to be in the classroom with our kids, they kill themselves every single day to make sure that our kids get the very best of themselves. And this is not just this year, this is, you just heard, 25 years' worth of this going on, day in and day out. You know, there are other ways, other means by which we could have made some changes to save some money in this district, starting at the very top of our administration. There are ways that we could have and continue to have opportunity to bring revenue into this city with what's going on with our Main Street downtown, other business opportunities and opportunities out on Route 1 that, and I know we have at least two city councils in this room that I'd like them to hear and take notice as well, so that they can bring this back to the council. We need to start to do things here to bring revenue in. You can only stretch a rubber band so much. You continue to, I mean, these teachers in the classroom, they're here to support our kids, to give the supports that our kids need day in and day out, and they do come out of pocket almost every day to make sure that our kids have what they need. So now you take those things away, you continue to stretch this rubber band, eventually we're going to lose these great people that commit themselves every day to our kids, to your kids, to your kids, to your kids. This is a serious issue here, because now you're going to have very experienced teachers, very positive teachers, very significant role models in our children's lives, looking to find something better, and there are districts around us where there are better opportunities for teachers. You know, we've gone through multiple failed searches for a superintendent in the past. We've spent money on that that could have been reeled back in that we didn't really need to do. We've got our superintendent right here, she's been here for years. You know, why are we wasting money on those types of things and not putting them into places like this? So again, some forethought, some foresight where we go from here. Like I said, these teachers are here to support our children, to provide the supports that they need. Some of those things are going to be stripped away from them. Less professional development, less supplies to teach our kids, larger class sizes. When you take away those things that they need, that our teachers need to support our kids, then the kids aren't going to have the supports that they're going to need either. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify on the class sizes, I have the exact class sizes projected for next year in each classroom in every school at the elementary level, including the reduction of the 10 positions. I think you'll find that they're some of the best, if not the best, in the entire region. So I'm going to post these on the website, the school website, and I'll ask the mayor to post it on his website as well. But if you'd like, anybody would like me to read them to you after this public hearing, I'd be glad to do so.
And I did want to mention, because Mr. Odessa raised some good points, but I did want to state that in the superintendent search, we did not spend money on the superintendent search. We only spent money when we got a candidate that we hired. So our previous search, in which we didn't hire somebody, there was not $1 spent on that search. When we did the second search and hired Kara Mertag, there was a fee that went to the Mass Association of School Committees. So there was no money spent on earlier searches, it was just the one, but I did want to make sure this stated, because there was no money spent that affected this budget because of any earlier searches. Mrs. Bugala, welcome. Would you please introduce yourself?
Okay, Dorothea Kaczynski, 8 Coleman Street, Peabody, and I've been with the system for 49 years.
And you were just awarded the Peabody Legacy Award the other evening for that, and again, I wanted to congratulate you on your career.
Thank you so much.
It's been amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I want to first start out by saying how much I appreciate each and every one of you, because I know what you're doing is not easy, and I certainly wouldn't want to try. The thing is, I'm not as eloquent as the other people that have spoken, but I just want to say that I am concerned about the staff development cuts. And what bothers me is we have so many new teachers coming in. I mean, I'm on my way out, that's fine, you know, but we have a lot of new teachers coming in that really need the guidance and the help from, you know, the school department. A lot of these people are just starting out. They don't have a lot of cash, they might be married, young children, and they have to go out and try to find staff development in order to renew their license. It isn't like, you know, we were supposedly had our license for life when we originally started, but they have to go out and they have to renew this. They have to pay money, they have to find babysitters for their children, and, you know, and then on top of that, they're basically losing two days' pay by this cut. And two days' pay, on the average, would end up like 1%. Now, I don't know if the, you know, not that I'm saying anything about the police or the fire, should they, you know, I think they should get everything they do, because they're wonderful. But I'm concerned that, you know, if they're not paying this 2%, you know, if they're not losing 1% of their pay and they're getting a raise, then that kind of puts the teachers backwards. So I'm saying, you know, like, I really would like to see that the staff development not be cut and that, you know, to provide for the young teachers coming in and to also give us an opportunity to keep on par with the other unions in the city. And I thank you all very much for your consideration. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick clarification, and thank you, Dot. Well said. There are still pockets of money for staff development. For example, one of the things that we belong to is the Salem State Collaborative, which actually comes here to the middle school to provide a great deal of professional development, almost all free, right?
Uh huh.
Yeah? To our teachers, because we spend the money to belong. Some of you in this room may have taken advantage of that Salem State Collaborative here, but we've belonged to that for two or three years?
Yeah.
I think three years. I think this is going on three years, and we will continue that investment. So we haven't cut back on that, and that still does provide a great deal of professional development for our teachers right here on site through Salem State.
Good evening. Jessica DGN Fleece, 21 Clark Road. I'm a Peabody resident, lifetime Peabody resident. My kids go to Peabody Public Schools, and this is my 21st year teaching at a high school. I just wanted to make clear, the mayor had mentioned a 2% raise for teachers. If we are, however, going to lose pay because of those professional development days that are being taken away, that won't be 2%. I do also want to clarify that people like Dot Kaczynski, who are looking to retire next year, are going to lose money every year for the rest of their lives because of that decrease in pay. There is that potential, and that needs to be considered as well. I understand we have budgets, I most certainly do. I know that any money I lose is going to be money my family doesn't have. I am going to have to tell my children they can't have something or they can't do something. And quite frankly, I'm getting tired of having to tell my family they have to And quite frankly, I'm getting tired of having to tell my family they have to make sacrifices because I've chosen to be a teacher. Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to come forward?
I guess I'm last. I'm Christie DiLoretto, and I live at 12 S. Square Drive. I have three students in the district, well, two, yeah, I guess three, one at Carroll, one at Higgins, and one who is now at Essex Tech. I just wanted to come up here, I just, in listening and seeing all of the teachers here and mostly teachers here, it's just, it's hard to, it's hard to sit here as a parent and just listen to some of the, you know, the way that you're kind of balancing some of the changes that you're going to make with this. It's hard to sit here and say, well, we had a fire, so we need to take some money from the budget of education to be able to put money towards that fire. I can't, I can't make that connection, it's difficult to see, there's got to be somewhere else. I'm sitting here saying to myself, there's nowhere else to pull the money from to be able to put that towards, you know, that fire so that we can save the education piece. You know, it's, the supplies, I, my son is 15, I've gone through this, I'm very friendly with a lot of these teachers, they don't make enough money, in my opinion, as it is, but then to be able to say, and I've watched them, I mean, I have a child with allergies and I've seen like food coming in and tried to help them as much as I can, but to see them struggle, to be able to provide, and they do, I mean, they fund all of this stuff, they come in with folders, they've got their little, you know, the little containers with all of their names on it, none of that's being funded. And like Mrs. Ramstein said, you know, she's, she provides her own stickers, I mean, that's, it was kind of poignant to me to hear that, a sticker. I mean, I remember being in school and getting the star sticker, and I always assumed teachers were provided this stuff, and they're not. And I just, I just feel like we need to take a step back and kind of look at the big picture and figure out what is important. Where can we come up with the money? Like Brian Adessa said, there has to be somewhere else that we can find this, and I don't envy your jobs at all, I, this is hard, and I know that you all have kids and it's hard. But there just has to be some other way so that the teachers that are sitting here aren't looking for another profession. We have school shootings every single week, 22 so far, and it's May. I mean, there's kids with mental illness that are going unaddressed, we cannot reduce the number of teachers that are teaching special education, because when these kids get to high school, what's going to happen? They got lost in the system. And where is that going to trickle down to? And this makes me upset, because I just feel like, you know, we've got these kids at the high school level and they're shooting schools and classmates, and you watch the news and you say, we knew this was going to happen, we saw this, we saw this kid struggling all these years, and we knew it was going to happen, but we didn't have the means to help them. So I would just say, if you can, if there's any other place that you can pull the money from, 500,000 isn't a lot in the grand scheme of things for supplies, and it seems kind of crazy to start picking these things apart, but these teachers are giving everything they have. I mean, my kids are their kids, and they would stand in front of them to take a bullet for these kids, and I think that we need to do the same for them. So I just wanted to say that.
I'm Dan Walsh. I live at 397A Lowell Street in PBD. How's it going, Jared? Went to school with Jared, good guy. Wish him well in his next job there. I have two students who are both enrolled at the Carroll School right now, phenomenal school. Both my kids also went to preschool at the McCarthy School, awesome school. I don't think, and we've heard from lots of people, I don't think anyone thinks you guys have a good job, or an easy job. We know it's necessary. Sorry. But here's the thing, I heard a lot of back patting earlier about how much you guys have done and how much you guys have added. Those are things you're supposed to do. Those aren't things that you're like, hey, look, we added a resource officer, hey, we did this, no one did that before us. That's stuff you're supposed to do. That's stuff that, we live in the best country in the world, supposedly, you know, you guys are supposed to give that to our kids. You know, when I didn't have kids, I looked at all the areas around here and I said to myself, all right, where can I afford to live, what has a decent school system, who has low taxes? I said, okay, PBD, that's cool, let's go there. And for the most part, it's been a really great town for my kids, but I do fear that it's no longer going to be a good educational system for my kids. You know, when we hear Christie and Brian and every teacher in here, I'm sure, there's a lot of teachers, how many of you guys actually bring stuff in for your classes? Can I see some hands? How can you say that you're providing everything that they need for their classes? You see the hands? And this isn't like, hey, I brought in a drone to show my kids like it, no, no, no. They're bringing in stickers, they're bringing in books. Sometimes they're bringing in socks and underwear for kids who don't have enough. You know, you guys talk about, you know, going to the state and getting grants and stuff, and then you talk about, okay, we're not going to eliminate jobs, we're just going through, what's the word? Thank you, attrition. So no one will be affected, no teachers will be affected. The kids will be affected, because now you're going to have that many less positions to monitor, to educate, and to help grow these kids. You know, you can't, it takes a village, but the village is shrinking, you know? And, you know, we watch these guys all the time, you know, and they come in on their days off and they, you know, they come in at night, and my dad was a teacher for 42 years in Wakefield, my whole family, our teachers. I went to school for education, and I'll say it right now, I'm not as brave as you guys were. And there's a reason for that. I went to do my student teaching, and I said, you know what? It's not the kids that, you know, I don't want to fight for my job from day one. I made that choice for myself, you know, but these people here, they were selfless. They decided, no, I'm going to fight for your kids, you know? I think that, you know, again, the back patting of, you know, we've done all this stuff for you guys, you should, you should take note of it, that's your job. I go to work. Nobody says, hey, good job for showing up. You know, it's true, though, it's true. You're not, you're not, go above and beyond and I'll tell you a good job. But do what you're supposed to do? Not so much, you know? I just, you know, when you talk about positions, I think you should, you should change that word and say people, because I think that if you say people, then, I don't know, maybe you'll find that money somewhere else, maybe we don't have to have so many pop-up pubs, and trust me, I like them. I do. I think they're great, I think what the city has been doing to revitalize and get the community together, I think it's phenomenal. But you never hear of anybody cutting those kind of things and giving it back to the school. We hear a lot about the grants you guys apply for, but that comes from the state. What do you guys, when you have a surplus, when are you giving it back to the schools? You know what I mean? You guys, you guys have unexpected expenditures, guess what? We're all adults, we all have unexpected expenditures, you know? But the fact of the matter is, is that when you don't and you have a surplus, it never comes back to the schools. So, anyway, I think, I'm just going to ask for a show of hands one more time. Again, I know you guys have a tough job, but the fact of the matter is, is a lot of people in here, I think, would like to see you go above and beyond and do better. I would. I don't know if anyone else would, but, you know, the thing is, is that we need you guys to. We don't need you to do this, we don't need you to do your job, we need you to do above your job, because that's what you're asking these guys to do. You're asking these guys to do above their job. Not only are they supposed to educate, but they're supposed to pamper, they're supposed to be therapists, they're supposed to clothe your kids, they're supposed to feed your kids, you know? Time to clothe them and feed them. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tiara Mason, I live on 46 Hampshire Road in PBD. My husband and I are both, sorry, this is very intimidating. Sorry, my husband and I both work at the PBD schools. We have two small children, we have one in the Little Tanners, and we have one in daycare. Cutting those days for us, we spent pre-children years investing in our education, so that $800 hit is actually 1,600 plus for my family. That's our mortgage. That's just something, it's not just affecting one family, it's affecting all, and it's affecting mine in a big way.
I live in Lynn, 281 Western Ave. I've been teaching at PBD High School for 25 years now, and I would like to say that I have enjoyed educating all of your students, all the students of PBD, very much over the years. But I truly hate the fact that we have to fight every single time to get what we need. We are not treated as educated professionals a lot of the time. We seem to take the biggest hits. I bring stuff in all the time for my classes. Yes, we have a supply budget, yes, we maximize it, but I bring in things all the time. My kids get stickers at the high school, they love it. I want to feel respected. I want a teacher to feel respected in PBD, show us that you support us and you understand that we are trying the best we can. I feel like we're almost taken for granted that teachers just do it, because they love the kids, which we do, they love their job, which we do, but I feel like it is taken for granted that we will do it no matter what. You give us a box, you give us a stick, we will teach your kids. But we deserve more, we deserve supplies. I can't believe the supply budget is going to get cut. My stapler broke this year. Now, yes, I've been teaching for 25 years, I've had several staplers from the City of PBD over 25 years, but they break, they fall, they break. Ask me how many staplers I have bought for my class. Over 25 years, I, it's a lot, I mean, it's more than I've been given by the city, sorry. It's more than I've been given by the city, I have, I have bought staplers. I, I just, I'm so tired of this. Can't we just get the money we need, knowing that a lot of us, all of us now, need our masters, they have to pay for their masters, a lot of my colleagues are still in school getting their master's degrees while they're teaching, young families, they're still paying off student loans from undergraduate, never mind graduate. Help us out, find the money. Education expenses are going up, all our expenses are going up. I have a house, I have a family, expenses go up, milk goes up, gas goes up. Those are things you have to have, you have to find the money. Stop taking money from the educators. Thank you.
Is anyone else that would like to come up and speak?
Good evening. I'm an 11-year veteran at the high school. As an 11-year veteran, I'm now the newest or second newest English teacher, because we've already lost 20% of our staff in the English department due to attrition. Last year, I was already sent down to the middle school.
Can you please just state your name?
Justin McLean. As a result of me moving to the middle school last year, a friend of mine was fired to make room for my position. The other teacher who was sent down bounced another teacher who ended up, I think, working in Beverly, not that it matters. But I guess I just had a couple of questions. Number one, are we, we making the comments after we've already voted on the, on the budget as it stands?
We haven't voted yet.
Oh, okay, well then, forgive my ignorance. And then I guess my, my second question is, with the high school being a Level 3 school now, with the potential to drop farther, what stipulations in the budget will allow us to climb back now that the teachers are being asked to do more to assist in raising our at-risk students back to the level they need to be for us to be back at Level 2? Thank you.
Hello, my good friends. My name's Melissa Silveregy-Morangs. I think I'm the perfect follow-up to my colleague, because I don't live in PBD anymore. You want to know why? Because I can't afford a house here, because I teach at the high school. I can afford a house in Lawrence. You want to know why? Because their school system was taken over by the government, so all of their homes cost way less. In fact, my Realtor told me that my four-bedroom, two-bathroom Dutch Colonial in Lawrence would cost almost $1 million in PBD, and it was less than $300,000 in Lawrence. So I don't know a lot about business, but I feel like the equity of some of our homes is also going to go down if our school systems decline, okay? My kids are going to school here, my kids are the most important thing in my life. I keep taking from them to give to you guys as kids. I'm always taking from my own children, and I don't think twice about it, because my students are like my little siblings. I would do anything for them, I would get in front of a bullet for them, I would. But I am surrounded by these geniuses, they are masters in their craft. You force us to be, but we enthusiastically take that on. And I am surrounded by colleagues who would do anything for your children, but I bet you they'd get paid doing something else somewhere else. But it would not be as rewarding, it would not be a job that you wake up and look forward to every day. It is not work in that high school. But I am so tired of being the art teacher, so one of us is going to get cut. The supplies, we need those, you know that. I can't do it anymore, I can't pay for it anymore. You're going to be so impressed by the stuff at the art show tomorrow between 6:00 and 8:00 at the high school. But all that stuff costs money, it's not free, and I don't have it anymore, I don't have the financial means, the energy, and my passion, it's dwindling, it's not getting easier. I'm nervous, because my friend is right, pretty soon that high school is going to be at a level that we cannot, we're not going to be able to recuperate from, and it'll be my kids that I'll have to choose to send somewhere else, and I don't want them in a different school system. I am PBD's best, I went to school here. I went to Monstra in Beverly, I came right back and taught right after that in the same high school I graduated from for a reason. I could have gone anywhere. I graduated with my Master's 4.0 from Salem State, I went right back to PBD High for a reason. I love it there. Make it easier for us, please, make it easier for us. We reward you every day, we'll continue to do so. Once you give us what we need, watch, just watch what we are capable of, just watch.
Anybody else who'd like to?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Dr. Levine, Ms. Murtagh, and other distinguished committee folks. My name is Pamela Millman, and I live in PBD 135 Lynn Street, and I have two children in the PBD Public School System, and I'm proud to say that they're doing very, very well and have wonderful teachers that support them, and not just teachers, but other support staff. I just wanted to kind of put out some questions there, how you balance some of these things with the budget cuts, and a few of them just to mention. When you talk about cutting supplies, you've recently added a project-based learning program with the science curriculum, is my understanding. Where are the supplies going to come from to continue the curriculum that you spent money on? You're going to be bringing in a social studies curriculum. I can't say enough how important I personally think a social studies curriculum is in our schools and what we're lacking in cultural education, that I think often leads to social skills missteps in lots of ways. What kind of learning and supplies are not going to be provided when the curriculum is brought in? What's going to happen there? And what are the teachers going to have to dig into their own pockets for when we look at making better and richer curriculum that most often is related to project-based learning and things they need, and not just textbooks, not just a Chromebook? When you say a lot of positions... When you say a lot of positions and I, whoever it was that said, talk about them as people that are going away due to attrition, so they're just not being filled, how do we make sense of that? Why aren't we looking at what other things and what that position could be in a person to beef up another program? One school adjustment counselor per building is fantastic. It's clearly not enough with what's happening in our communities, this one and around. We need more. They need support. The teachers need support. The school adjustment counselors need support. They need professional development in things we're dealing with that we have never dealt with in our society before, such as these horrible events happening around our, our world. We need more in supporting our students and their skills. We need more to support the teachers and efforts to do that. We need more to support the rise in numbers of children on the autism spectrum that need these people. They need speech and language pathologists. We can't just say one's enough. We need to look at how to add two more. We can't say one school adjustment counselor or guidance counselor is enough. We need to add more to support the teachers in supporting the children. And if we have stronger programs with stronger people, then we're also potentially even could have an income base as another local community does and takes in other students from communities because their programs have been strengthened and the numbers have been added for people. I don't know where to find it in a budget, but when I hear things like due to attrition, we're just not going to fill these positions, I think the question should be the other way around or how many ways we can put in positions. Because now we have not, maybe not that one, maybe we do a shift and we do something to strengthen our program and strengthen our schools. We don't want our school system to be where Lawrence is and in receivership, but I can tell you, a lot of people look at that and say, phew, at least we have support. They need the support. All of these cuts, when they seem small and minor, end up being really big for our children. I look at where my children are going to go next and I look at that high school and I look at the supports there and I hear people talking and I hear the teachers themselves talking. It's really hard to listen to. I think with all these cuts and these, we're losing it by attrition, needs to be revisited to perhaps put it in and strengthen programs so that we're then a real beacon of education on the North Shore that people are going to want to send their kids here and want to move here.
Hi. My name's Nicole Kenny. I don't live in PBD. I live in Woburn. I have been teaching in PBD public schools for 13 years. I started my position here at the Burke School, but I was unfortunately moved due to the reduction in staff situation that happened a number of years ago. Currently at the Carroll School, we have 630 students, somewhere around there. Fire drills, you can really see it. We range from kindergarten to grade five. We have a tremendous amount of Title I. We have a tremendous amount of ELL and we have a tremendous amount of students that are just barely making it to school. We clothe them, we feed them and we make sure they are safe. We do all of this with one guidance counselor and a part-time adjustment counselor. You mentioned how the McCarthy School had to give up part of their library to house a classroom so that the classroom sizes weren't as large. I actually got that phone call in October of this year and said, no, because I do like the Carroll School, love the Carroll School. It's crazy. There's a lot going on over there. There are kids everywhere and there are teachers everywhere and there are many times when people in very tall heels had to run up and down North End Street to get students, but we did it because we love our kids and we wanted to make sure they didn't make it to Salem. Anyways, at the Carroll School, we currently no longer have a health room because it is a classroom. We no longer have an art room because it is a classroom. We are on the verge of losing our computer lab because it's going to be a classroom. We don't have a PTO room anymore because that's where 90-some-odd ELL students are getting services in a room that was meant for storage. We have staff members giving services in the hallway. Today, we had a school psychologist administering tests for an IEP for a meeting in a stairwell because there was no place else for her to go, because there is no place else for them to go. But we're going to cut teachers and we're going to cut classrooms and we're going to put people together? We have the crisis team at our school at least once a month. We have DCF at our school at least once a week, twice on Friday, alone. Officer Cochran is at our school every morning. One, because he likes us, we're fun, but two, because he really does need to be there because there's a lot that goes on in that school. There's a lot that goes on in a lot of these schools. And I know that you guys have a really, really unbelievably tough job. I get that and you have kids, little kids, big kids. Yours are way big now. And I know that you have to vote on this tonight and I'm not naive that you guys haven't had in your head what you need to do. And I know that you not only need to look at figures for the city, you need to look at figures for the school and all of those moving pieces and I understand that. However, when you are making that vote tonight, I think that you need to remember the faces that are behind what you're voting for, that it is retirements and, and people moving on or, or people that are, you're not hiring back. But with all of those positions, they had kids with them at one point this year, kids that needed them and they probably need them more next year too.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Elias Renoso. I live on 363 Lowell Street in PBD. I came to this country when I was eight years old, lived in Lynn for two years and then came to PBD. And I'm proud to say that I love the education I got in PBD. But the young lady just spoke now about the ELL kids. I was an ELL kid. So I'm listening to her story and I'm thinking, the resources that I had when I was younger, if they were taken away, I probably never would be here right now, stuttering, trying to talk to you right now because I'm so nervous. But I'm here now in front of you and I want to say thank you to the people that are standing in front of me because they also gave me an opportunity to continue what I do, what I love to do. I met the mayor of Bittencourt. I pretended I was taking money out of the ATM machine to bump into him, to have a conversation with him about how I had to renew my license and I was getting cut and I got a letter in the summer and I was doing this program that I would have my license back within a year. And he told me that we would meet with superintendent Herbert Levine and we were going to get it all straightened out because we don't want to lose good teachers. So I believed when he said that and I still believe him today when he says that this is a tough decision, it's something that he wants to do. But I also think about when I met with the doctor and how he talked to me and he said, you're a PBD product, you're a PBD guy, we want to keep you here and we want to make the best situation out of this. So if you're telling me that you can do this program in a year, we're going to stretch you out and we're going to let you keep continuing what you do. And I think about that and I think about the opportunity he gave me to continue what I love to do. And I'm sitting here, listening to everybody talk about, we don't need the cuts, we don't need the cuts, we need the cuts. And I hope that they understand that if they would have cut me, I would not be here three years later with my master's degrees from Salem State that I finished within a year and a half and given the opportunity to be doing what I love to do. I was a history major in college, but I spoke another language. So I took that opportunity to get hired at PBD High and I became a Spanish teacher. So I look at the opportunities that most of us have and some of us chose a different path, probably taught a different subject, did something else, but you evolved and you turned into what you are today. But if you were not given the opportunity to continue doing what you're doing, some of us wouldn't be here today. I think about what the young lady said about the Carroll School and it touches me because I would not be here today. This is the greatest country in the world and I'm telling you that the situation that I came from and the situation that I went into, completely different. I got the opportunity to do something that I love to do. I get to educate kids every single day. I get to teach them the wonderful language of Spanish every single day, talk to them about my culture, talk to them about where I came from, talk about how everything is different and how we can come together here and talk about it. This is the greatest place in the world and I just want them to understand that if you did not give me the opportunity and if I didn't pretend that I was getting money at the ATM, we would not be here today. So I hope that, as much as we're, you know, laughing about this, I hope that some people understand how serious this is. We are in a position to educate kids. My son is six years old. He goes to the center of school. My daughter is three years old. She's in the little tanners. I don't want to leave this city. I've been here for about 33 years. I'm 41 years old. I know I look great, but I'm 41 years old. I also want to say that we need to understand how serious this is and I hope that when you vote, you vote what you're conscious and we will accept it because that's how things are. We have a process. We vote on things. I'm just appealing to your better nature. I love what I do. These people here love what they do. I could, I have to go buy milk after this, but I love what I do. And I just wanted to say that before I leave, that we have an opportunity to be better than we are right now. Are we going to just stick with the bottom line and just vote on numbers or are we going to vote for something that we don't see that could possibly be? My coach always said it, if you can dream it, you can do it, but you have to believe it. I believe that we can be better tomorrow, but I don't know if the money that we're allocating for this right now is going to do it. I'm not a budget guy. My wife does all the budgets in our house, but I know one thing, we have to understand what we're voting on and you're voting on us. You gave me an opportunity and I turned into something. I don't know if I'm getting you the return that you wanted, but I think I'm doing a pretty good job. These people are asking for the same thing, so I hope we understand that. We just want to do better, but we need the opportunity to do that. So por favor, darno la oportunidad hacer esto. Muchas gracias.
Hello, my name is Barbara Marston. I teach first grade at the Carroll School. I do not live in PBD. I live in Tewksbury. I have a 45-minute commute after I leave here. I've not yet gone home today because it's not worth it to me to drive all the way to Tewksbury and then drive all the way back. I also now work a second job after school in the FKO program because the money I make as a teacher doesn't pay for all of the bills that I have. I have four children and three of them are in college this year, so I've had to take on a second job, which is lucky for me because it's FKO and it's right at the school. I have a sister who's a nurse at the Mass General. When I first went back to school to college, I started going to be a nurse and when I read that first book about hemorrhoids looking like a bunch of grapes, that just wasn't the job for me. So I went to my first love, which was always teaching. And when I got back into teaching, I'm so thankful to the town of PBD for hiring me. I've loved every year that I've worked here and I, and I am thankful that I have the job that I have. My sister did go on to be a nurse and she works in the Mass General and she says, oh, I got to go in and work a 12-hour shift. And I'm like, what's it like to work 12 hours and get paid for all 12 of them? Because I work 12 hours pretty much every day at the school and if you drive by any one of the schools in this town, you'll see that there's cars there anytime from 7:00 on. Our school doesn't start till 9:00. I'm in by 7:30, which if I live in 45 minutes away, I'm leaving my house at 6:00, 6:30-ish to get here. But we all work so much unpaid overtime and when we leave at the end of a 12-hour day, how many of you would take and work home with you every night and doing it? How many of you are working a second job to help pay for what your livelihood, to pay your mortgage and to pay your three kids in college at the same time? I'm just asking that you don't cut, if you cut $800, that's, that's about what I take home in a week. That's a whole week's take-home pay for me after taxes and after medical insurance and retirement and union and all the, you know, everything that's already taken out of our pays. I'm just pleading with you when you make this choice, as somebody said, we're people and we're people that are working second jobs, some of us third jobs. I'm going to be working all summer. I'm not having the summer off. I have to work all summer. How many people are working this summer? We're trying to make our ends meet and we're thankful for the job we have and we're thankful for the support we have, but we're just asking you to keep supporting us and keep thinking that, as somebody said, we're people. And as everybody said, we're all spending our own money in our classrooms. If the police work overtime or the firemen are working overtime, they're getting paid for it. You're getting such a bargain because we're all working so much overtime that you're not paying us for. We're working it for free now. We can't keep giving our time and our money and our time away from our families and not be respected for that and not be compensated for that. I'm leaving here tonight with a bag full of stuff I have to take home and correct. I probably won't get to bed till after midnight and then I'll be up at 5:00 to get in my car at 6:00 to get, to get here on time. And I'll be here and I'll have a smile on my face and I'll deal with those 22 little first graders and we'll have a great old day. But I just, please, like, we're people. We're, we're not just a number in a, in a line item budget. There's, there's got to be money somewhere. If the police work overtime, you find the money to pay them. They're standing at, doing a detail, I'm not trying to bash the police, I'm not. Everybody does their jobs and everybody's jobs are important. But if you're standing there directing traffic on a detail and you're getting overtime for it and we're in classrooms with 23, 24, 25, six-year-olds, anybody want to come and do it for a day? You'll see that we're earning our keep here and so we don't deserve to have anything cut, whether it's supplies or $800 or professional development. I'm just pleading with you to really take that into consideration. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lori Coleman. I live at 578 Lowell Street. I had no intention of stepping up here tonight whatsoever. Sorry, hon. To hear that a child was getting tested in a stairwell at the Carroll School, I have a child, I have two children. I have a 21-year-old, almost 22, who's going to be aging out of the special ed program and a six-year-old going on 24 at the center. My daughter went through all that testing and if I had ever found out that she was tested in a stairwell by anybody, a school psychologist, anybody, I would have been livid and you all would have, you all would have known who I was, trust me. That is absolutely abhorrent to me. I look around the room, I, my daughter went to the Carroll, the Welch, Higgins, the high school. I can't even tell you how many of you had her. I need to tell you, you need to do something to find the money somewhere else. She was in the special ed program from the age of three all the way up. So many of the teachers in this room made such a huge difference in her life and it wasn't because they had a budget to do so, it was because they're wonderful, caring human beings. And to hear that they're taking away from their own families because they're buying supplies, I know that I send supplies into the, the center school all the time. My husband and I are on the PTO at the center school because we care about what's going on in the school system. My daughter just took a college age, a college class at North Shore. No special ed, no supports, nothing. Struggled like you wouldn't believe, but she passed it with an A-. That is not something that she ever could have done without the likes of Elaine Metropolis, Mrs. Byrne, Melissa. I, I can't, there's a million of you and I'm sorry, I can't name you all. But to me, that speaks volumes, that you need to find somewhere else. Don't be cutting funding in the budget here, supplies, any of that. There's got to be something else that you can come up with. Take a little from here, a little from here, a little from here. There's got to be something because my child, all these other people's children, they're more important and they're worth it. To know that my kid struggled her entire life in school and came home to tell me she got an A- in a class that typical peers were taking and she didn't have, you know, one-on-one tutoring or anything like that. She had no accommodations whatsoever and that's because she went to the PBD public schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Anybody else would like to, please?
Hello, my name's Heather Pollack and I'm a teacher at the Carroll School. Excuse my hat, I just came from my second job. I'm a spin instructor. I'm a spin instructor. And I do that so I can provide extra supplies for my students because they are my children. And I can speak for every one of my fellow colleagues. They think of every one of their students as their own child. And I left corporate America. I was in sales because I wanted to pursue my passion for education. And I believe education goes beyond the curriculum. You have to think about compassion. And when I look at a student that doesn't have crayons, doesn't have a jacket, doesn't have mittens, how can I say no to that child? I will find a way and I know that all my colleagues will also find a way. And they do, through extra jobs. I'm even selling my clothes on this website called Boshmark to provide extra for my students. And it just breaks my heart to think that, I think the, the atmosphere and our morale will kind of be crushed if we don't have the support behind us to provide our students with the tools that they need to truly succeed. And it also takes away from a teacher. If I'm working three jobs, it takes away from my planning and from my passion, you know, in the classroom. So, I beg you, please, to reconsider and think about the benefit of the children. I don't know if I said this at the beginning, but I went through the Peabody Public School System myself and I'm proud that I'm a Peabody graduate. I loved my experience. I loved all my teachers, my first grade teacher, Mrs. Cavino. I don't know if she's here tonight. But fond memories. And my, my teachers would do anything for me. And I know that my colleagues do their best for my, for their students. And I just wish we would have the support and reconsideration. Thank you.[725.23][725.23](applause)
Anybody else would like to, to speak, please?
My name is Katie Scarry and I'm in my twelfth year of teaching at the high school. And I am somebody who works a second job in the night school that you mentioned earlier. And I'll admit that when I took that job six, almost six years ago, I did it because I wanted to move out of my parents' house.[763.81][763.81](laughter) Sorry, Mom. She's over there. She's been texting me. But I couldn't have stayed there for six years if it was just that. I'm there because those students are important. They would be part of a dropout rate if it weren't for programs like this and they deserve a teacher. You said there are two teachers up there, but there's only one on a given night. It's basically one job split between two teachers. I'm there Mondays and Wednesdays and Mr. Brand is there Tuesdays and Thursdays. And if we cut that, there's nobody there for those kids and they need somebody there for them. This is a difficult group, a challenging group sometimes, and I just want you to reconsider because I think those kids deserve a teacher.[808.68][808.68](applause)
Anybody else would like to come forward?
I just wanted to, Mayor, when you were talking about the percentages of what the budget is reduced by, I'm totally confused. Could you give us the actual figure of what the reductions amount to?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Well, I'm confused about everything that's been in the paper, what people have said, what initially came out was four point one percent, I had heard. And so, you're saying that the, the newspaper was incorrect. So, I was asking, or am asking, what is the actual percentage that the budget's being reduced by this year?
The budget's not being reduced this year. And the, and the headlines in the newspaper, the one that jumped out at me was the Peabody Advocate. And it said that the main line item was six point four being cut from school budget. So, in my opening remarks, that's what I wanted to touch on because that's not accurate. This year's budget, last year's budget was seventy-one million, eight-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-three. This year's proposed budget is seventy-three million, seven-hundred-and-ten-thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-three. So, it's actually an increase of the budget of one point eight, one million, eight-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand, which is about two point seven percent, somewhere around there. So, it's actually an increase. The issue has been because of the contractual obligations, the steps and lanes, which you, which teachers have earned. Because of the health insurance, which is really crippling this year, the nine point nine percent, that's about two million dollars to our overall budget. And the fact, special education costs and, and other things that are important that we have to address. But because of those costs, we've had to reallocate within the budget. So, the budget's increasing. We would never decrease the budget. That's not the issue. The problem has been because of these additional costs, it's just put some strain and stress on us to account for that additional money that's required to meet our, to meet our needs. And, and that's the thing, it's particularly at the high school. The fact of the matter is the Essex Vocational School has been taking a lot of our students, which is unfortunate. I was one that did not support moving forward with the regional school. I wanted to invest in the city of Peabody. And I think one of the speakers earlier that, because I thought we could do the job here. But we're spending a great deal of money. It's a terrific school. But we had, previously, it was about ten students per year would leave the eighth grade from the Higgins and go to either the two schools, Essex Aggie or North Shore Tech. Now, we have about, on average, eighty to eighty-five. So, that's seventy-five less kids that typically go into the high school. So, that's why I think when we were looking at the budget and trying to make these tough decisions, we were looking at the fact that the enrollment has gone down drastically at the high school. And it's difficult and that was one we've really struggled with. So, I, but I wanted to make it clear that we, we would never, I would never support and I would never even propose where we would cut a budget. The schools are too important to me. You do too much valuable work. Very thoughtful, the, the comments that were made. I, I really appreciated that. But, you know, when we were looking, we thought that was a way maybe that we could take some stress off, off us and maybe with the high school cutting some of the teachers there just because of the fact that the enrollment has gone down so significantly. So, that was it. But it, it isn't an actual increase, the two point six percent or so.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, well, thank you. Oh. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name's Lareen Martino Costa and I'm a nurse at the Thomas Carroll School. I live about two houses away, as all the teachers know. I grew up there. I went to the original Carroll School, had Mr. Manning, Mr. Ryan. Long story short, I am a product of Peabody. My parents were immigrants. They came here. Me and my sister went to Peabody Public Schools, graduated. We have our degrees. She's off in Miami. I'm still here in Peabody. I state. I have two little kids. Currently, I don't have them in the, in the public school system because of the issues that I feel like impacting, something like this. My child can't get the services because you're not gonna have someone there all day long. Now, I have private services that I get done. And yes, Dr. Levine has worked with me and Ruth Grooby. These teachers go above and beyond on a daily basis. I can't speak for the other schools because I don't rotate like I used to. But I went through tons of schools, different nationalities, different issues, different parents. I don't know how long any of you have spent sitting at any school, watching. And I don't mean that in any bad, negative way. But I would love for you to see the different populations, not just from West Peabody, South Peabody, all parts of Peabody, Welch School. Again, the different populations and all these teachers take care of these kids and put them in a safe place. That's their only love. And I know, I'm just saying that this is all business and numbers. But then we also should be looking at the numbers of kids that are not being addressed and taken care of if you get rid of a teacher or an adjustment counselor. It's already a shortage with these adjustment counselors. And unfortunately, they end up towards the nurse's office after because there isn't enough out there already for them. And there's a lot of traumatic experiences. I don't know if everyone's aware of them with the kids. There's a lot of impact when you're cutting any type of staff. It's not just a, oh, it's okay, we can do one less. If you don't have subs, you can't have someone coming in to take that place. That's something that has to be looked into with all of these budget cuts. That's my concern. And these teachers, that's the other concern. If they're gonna be working, their morale's gonna be horrendous because they're gonna be worried, "Well, am I gonna get cut next year?" Because they have to make room for more money. So, I just want you to take the kids into consideration and take the schools, the populations, because you're looking at a different population, one side of the city versus the other side of the city, and the impact that it is to take someone away or keep putting. Again, Carroll School has six hundred and thirty kids. I don't know the numbers at the bark, but you're looking at probably a quarter of it. And the Higgins probably has, what, twelve hundred kids? Fourteen hundred?
I mean, the Carroll is the biggest school, no doubt about it. But it's not, it's not to that degree. But I, I can just...
It's when the classrooms seem to be overrun and overfilled, it's a concern that the kids aren't gonna get their equal education as a class that has fifteen kids in it. And as a parent, and I'm sure that's a concerning part to other parents, because you, you don't have the focus to put on all twenty-five kids as you would with a class of fifteen. I know you guys had talked about possibly redistricting. I don't know if that's still an option or not, if that would do anything with the budget and...
Redistricting is something we've considered. I struggle with redistricting to be, to be open with you. When I was in school, they redistricted. And I remember when I was at the South School, they brought students over from the McCarthy and it was very difficult. And I've always had that in my mind and I really felt for some of the students. And I know that can be disruptive for families. So, I, I don't take redistricting lightly and I've in fact been kind of the one delaying on that. I think ultimately, we have to do some redistricting. We talked, we talked about that actually in, in the earlier meeting. But I have struggled with that because I know it can be very difficult for kids, being out of school, being moved to another school when you're only one of maybe a few. So, that's the one I struggle with. To be, I just, it's my view.
I guess I have to reiterate with the other parent, if my child is being tested in the hallway, at what point are you violating the special education? Because there is no room to actually do it in an appropriate spot. And I just put that out there. I'm not being negative against anyone. I get, we do what we can. But it's all little things that I don't know if people are aware of that go on in the schools on a day-to-day basis as opposed to a big picture of, okay, well, this is the dollar spent at this school. So, it'd be nice if everyone got to see what is really being done every day on a daily basis at a school and what's being put into it, just like you guys put in all your time and effort into this role. The teachers do too. So, I think it would be nice if everyone else got to see their exact roles. I know Carroll, you do what you can and you see, you worked at the Carroll before too and you're aware of everyone. So, I just think that it's not something that should be taken lightly and just, it's a number. And you should look into all the other great teachers that are here.
Okay, well, thank you so much. That was a very, very powerful word, so thank you. I know it's not easy to get up and speak in front of people. I think all of us, we're appreciative of, to, to hear from each of you. Okay, so I think we need to open up the hearing or open up a discussion. We need to make a final vote, correct?
Yes.
I'll open it up to the committee members for any comments or questions. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to thank all the people that have come tonight. Many of these speeches were very powerful and have given a lot of very, very good reasons on how you feel about different issues in this budget. I do hope that many of you can understand what the mayor and superintendent said at the very beginning about making sure everyone understood what this budget process actually entailed this time. And I really do want to say that as a school committee member, it was very heartening to see this many people come out in support of education. This is honestly one of the, no, actually, I'll tell you, this is probably the biggest crowd I have ever seen at a budget hearing, ever. So, thank you for coming and for speaking out.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mrs. Coppender?
Thank you. I too would like to thank everyone who came out this evening. The information that you've provided us will go a long way. There are many faces that I recognize in the crowd. I want to say thank you to some of those teachers in particular that have educated my children and still are. I do appreciate every single one of you. I do want to say that we do have to get these numbers to the city council. Tonight is our deadline. We do have to move forward with this budget. We do have to take a vote. With that being said, I also want everyone to understand that these budgets are very fluid. Given everything and all of the information you've provided this evening, there are and can be opportunities for some of the things that you've mentioned to change once the budget has passed, just because of the, the way that it is so fluid. And everything that you've said will be taken into consideration. So, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve the salary line for the FY nineteen budget in the amount of fifty-one million, six-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars.
Second. Further, further motion by Mrs. Coppender, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make another motion to approve the non-salary line item in the budget in the amount of twenty-two million, sixty-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-one dollars.
Second. Further motion by Mrs. Coppender, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the total line item budget for the FY nineteen, seventy-three million, seven-hundred-and-ten-thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars.
Second. Further motion by Mrs. Coppender, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to close the public hearing.
We'll take a five-minute break. Okay, I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting back to order, and I wanted to turn it over to Dr. Levine. We have a couple of special guests today that we wanted to introduce, so... Dr. Levine, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to announce the hiring of a new school business manager. As you know, Jared will be leaving us, and thank you for all the work that you've done for us and will continue to do for us through your tenure here. Jared has been offered a wonderful opportunity that he absolutely cannot refuse, and we're sorry to see him go, but we're very happy to welcome a seasoned veteran, both CPA and school business manager, to the Peabody Public Schools. I'd like to introduce Tom LaFleur. Congratulations, Tom, and if you'd like to say a few words, please come right up to my microphone, but don't get used to it.
(LAUGHING) We took the...
Oh, do we have one there?
Well, we did. I'll put it back.
Okay. Actually, Tom, you go first. Thank you.
First lesson, be quick around here.
Okay, I want this one. Thank you, Dr. Levine. I appreciate the opportunity. I look forward to working with all of you. Is that short enough?
I didn't mean that.
Short and sweet.
(LAUGHING) Just hang on to your stuff.
(LAUGHING)
You could lose your phone, you could lose your...
So, well, I just want to, on behalf of the City of Peabody and the school committee, I want to thank you for applying to the City of Peabody, and I think your background is tremendous, your most recent work in Gloucester, and I think you're going to be a great addition to the City of Peabody. So, on behalf of all of us, we want to welcome you. We look forward to working with you. Thank you all. I appreciate the opportunity, and I really look forward to getting started. Welcome.
Thank you, Tom. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, in our audience tonight is Elaine Metropolis, who was also a legacy award winner, and I'd like to congratulate Elaine. It was a wonderful night, and no one is more deserving of that award.[1599.44][1599.44](APPLAUSE) With that, we will be saying so long to Ms. Metropolis, at least as a full-time principal in our district. She'll be retiring this year. And Ms. Murtagh and I set about the, the journey of finding a new Brown principal. I won't say anybody who will replace Ms. Metropolis, as we know she is irreplaceable, but someone who comes in with the extraordinary qualifications of a vice principal, co-principal at the school that she's been at in Andover. We were immediately impressed, as the committee was immediately impressed, the screening committee, with her credentials and the way that she carried herself in the interview, and she clearly became the top candidate. I know that Ms. Murtagh is very excited about Lauren coming on board with us, and I would invite Lauren to the table and welcome you to Peabody, Lauren, as the new Brown school principal, starting July 1.[1662.12][1662.12](APPLAUSE)
Thank you. I'm excited to be here. I am even, I still am excited to be here.
Those are the welcoming committee.
I know. It's so funny, as I was driving here today, I was thinking, I'm so excited to meet the staff and students. That's like top priority. I got the staff out of the way. I don't remember any of them, but I met them all. Now I'm excited to meet the students. Can't wait to meet some more of the administrators in town. I've already met a few now. Already have the little Brown team over there, which is great. Can't wait to see the school. You know, my boys can't wait to check out the playground. They're at my Bancroft playground all the time for night events and weekend events. As you know, it's like a home away from home. So this is just a wonderful next chapter of my professional career, and I thank you for the opportunity. I'm honored. I'm just absolutely honored, so.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you for being here.[1723.03][1723.03](APPLAUSE) Now, the regular school committee meeting should take about three minutes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, let's jump right into it. We do have some approval of past meeting minutes that I would like to...
Motion to approve May 8, 2018, regular school committee meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion by Mr. Hockman for approval of the May 8, 2018, regular school committee meeting minutes, seconded by Mrs. Coppender. Roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve the May 8, 2018, and May 15, 2018, budget meeting minutes.
Oh, second.
Further motion by Mr. Hockman for approval of the May 8, 2018, budget meeting minutes, seconded by Mrs. Coppender. Roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 Yeah, this one is too.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion to approve the May 15, 2018, budget meeting minutes.
Oh, I did them both.
You did both of them?
Yeah.
Oh.
Sorry.
I didn't know. It was only one. Leanna says.
So, the motion by Mr. Hockman for approval of May 15, 2018, budget meeting minutes, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. Roll call, vote, please.
Yes.
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 Great, thank you. Now, we'll move on to approval of bills. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A, number 3812, dated May 22, 2018, in the amount of $53,647.57, subject to audit.
Second. Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter to approve warrant A, number 3812, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call, vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant B, number 3819, dated May 22, 2018, in the amount of $756,507.5.
Second. Further motion by Mrs. Carpenter to approve warrant B, number 3819, seconded by Mr. Olympia. On the motion, Mr. Hockman?
Yes, thank you. Just for, actually, I wanted to say something about warrant A. Within this warrant, I wanted to thank Jared Stanton, who has been managing, or the school department's been managing, money that's been donated for the No Child Goes Hungry and PBD program, which is now being transferred back to the No Child Goes Hungry and PBD program, and they will be monitoring it, the money itself. But I wanted to thank him publicly and also disclose publicly that that money is being transferred back.
Thank you. Roll call, vote, please.
Yes.
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 Now, go on to item four, continued business. Mrs. Dunn, we have a few items for you. First one, MSBA Higgins Project, any new update?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had our monthly meeting last Thursday. What we're doing right now is compiling finalization details so that the project can be closed out soon. We're working on updating our lists of items that might need to be either attended to or addressed, and things are moving along very quickly. So, our next meeting will be, again, the third Thursday of the month, and it will probably be at City Hall. I will check on that and let you know at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Any update on transportation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The issue of transportation, when it was presented to the Subcommittee on Quality and Standards, was as far as being able to open up transportation to people at different areas, to look at who is eligible for transportation in our district, and what would be the corresponding costs and logistical matters that go into that. We did have meetings and, thanks to Mr. Stanton and also to Mrs. Breznerhan, there were quite a few computations at my request that were made about what would be the cost for various changes to our transportation. And they're very involved, they're very costly. Mr. Stanton has those numbers, and I think if I could, if I could ask Dr. Levine to speak on some of that, presently, I will say that, once the committee sees those numbers and hears those numbers, and in light of what Dr. Levine had brought forward last week at a budget hearing, that any changes to our transportation eligibility at this point would increase drastically the cost to the district. So, if I could turn it over to Dr. Levine, I think he'll be able to elucidate that.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Dunn. Through the chair, as a reminder, budget for transportation is approximately 1.3 million, correct me if I'm wrong, Jared, and we gain about $300,000 back in fees, so we're actually footing about 1 million of the 1.3 million dollar cost. Is that right, Jared?
Correct, 1.4, correct.
Okay. So, Jared spent the better part of a day with Mrs. Breznerhan, trying to figure out and project as best that they could, looking at bus routes and potential numbers of students, by increasing or actually decreasing the mileage by a half mile, a mile, and then a mile and a half. And you can just project out from the first number, we do project that it would cost us about $300,000 if we changed the transportation even for a half mile. And then, if we changed it for a mile, it would be about 600,000, and then, if we changed it for a mile and a half, it would be about a million dollars. We would gain back around the same amount of money in fees if all of the students that were riding were new. So, even projecting another $300,000 income, it would cost us total another $700,000 for the largest amount of money, and downwards of that. We figured the least it would cost us would be around 250 to 300,000 dollars. And that's because we would, we project that we would need five buses, five new buses, for the half mile. How many buses for the mile?
One mile, we're projecting 32 buses.
Thirty, another 10. Another 10 buses, and then, the mile and a half would be...
We projected that we would have to double our fleet.
So, it would be $60,000 a bus for every bus that we add. It's just, especially with this budget, I believe it's an impossible task for us to undertake, and it would be extraordinarily burdensome to be able to do this. I know that there are some school systems that are a half mile closer than we are, and they have always paid that transportation freight. But I think that, for the most part, they're school systems that are in different financial categories than we are. So, I can't recommend it as superintendent because I don't know where the money would come from, quite frankly.
Thank you, Dr. Levine. Is that complete, the reporter? Is there any comments?
Just one other, that this evening really is, we need to vote on sending out the letter to parents regarding transportation in order to give them time if they're going to pay the transportation fee. This is the date that they need to get that information in, and, I'm sorry, that we need to send that information out so that parents can begin getting that in. As you know, it's going to be very different.
So, as Mrs. Dunn has said through the chair, with the untimely passing of Mrs. Breznerhan and the assistant director taking over on an interim basis, number one, we are short-staffed, and number two, we certainly don't have the long experience that we had with Eileen Breznerhan, who did such an incredible job as Director of our Transportation Department. We need as much time as possible to get ourselves together. We do need you to vote this letter tonight so that we can begin doing all the preparations to getting letters out in a timely manner to our constituency, printing passes, and developing routes.
Thank you. Mrs. Dunn, you made the motion. The motion's been made by you to approve the letter and have it forwarded to...
Yes, for the school committee to approve the transportation letter so that it can be sent out to the families. So, move.
Seconded by everyone?
No, no.
No, only second, oh, on the motion. Seconded by...
Mr. Olympia.
Mr. Olympia, on the motion. Tom Hockman?
Thank you. Certainly, Ms. Breznerhan's untimely passing makes any conversation about transportation difficult, and, however, and I don't, we don't always agree with each other, and we're not supposed to always agree with each other, but we always conduct ourselves professionally. And for, you know, Mr. Mayor, I don't necessarily agree with your position on redistricting, but I got a little insight tonight as to why you have the position you have, and I respect that. We now have a policy before us, a letter that states the distance by which children are eligible for transportation, and the cost at which we're going to charge students for transportation, which we need to vote on annually. And it's identical to the policy that's been in place for the nine years that I've voted on it. This year, actually, this isn't the first time that we've had pushback on the transportation policy. We had a woman by the name of Amy Sliva, about four years ago, I think, through the assistance of Ms. Carpenter, come forward and introduce a one-way bus pass that we looked at, we got some information about, we took a chance on, and it turned out to be financially beneficial to the district and beneficial to students who only needed transportation one way. This year, we learned about, or at least I was told, that there were over 100 kids who were denied transportation because they lived within the distance that was not permitted to be transported to a school. And we had parents come forward and complain about that and talk to us about the difficulties that their students would have walking in the wintertime in particular, when there was inclement weather and sidewalks weren't cleared and dangerous conditions and things like that. And we discussed it as a committee after we were spoken to by those parents, those constituents, and I think we all agreed that it was unwise to change the policy for the 17-18 school year in the middle of the school year, and I agreed with that. And I agreed with that with the understanding that we were going to have some sort of meaningful conversation about transportation moving forward. And I'm not quite sure what Subcommittee meeting, the information that Mr. Stanton and Ms. Breznerhan worked on was presented to, other than that one Quality and Standards meeting that took place, I want to say, back in February. And then, we had conversations about scheduling a Quality and Standards Subcommittee meeting to dig into this, to look at what it would cost. And I didn't, I didn't know at that time, and I don't know at this time, because I haven't been provided the information, but I'm being asked to vote on a policy that's been stagnant that I'm hearing over 100 families complaining about. And I don't know how I do that as a committee member. I don't know how I just, Dr. Levine may be right. It may cost us money to do this, but then again, he may be wrong. He's been right about most things, but wrong about a few.
Name one.
And beyond that, the families that came here, that came to our school committee meeting to talk about this policy in public participation, who then also attended the one Subcommittee meeting where this was addressed, but it was addressed from the perspective, without, in my opinion, the information that was necessary for us to actually make an informed decision. Those parents, I asked for those parents to be given actual notice of a Subcommittee meeting so that they can attend it and participate in it, because it impacted their families and their children, and I was, received a fair amount of pushback on that, that it was beyond what we normally do, and we shouldn't change protocols. We shouldn't send out a Connect Ed message, and no offense, Dr. Levine, but a Connect Ed message just went out about an art show that's taking place at the high school. And I don't think any of us had voted on Connect Ed when we voted on it considering that we were going to have art shows, as important as it is. And I'm not trying to minimize the art department or demean the programs that they're operating up there, but when I asked for actual notice of a Subcommittee meeting, I got a rude awakening as to the lack of transparency that some people on this committee were willing to live with. And now, I spoke to one person who appeared at this meeting back in the winter, back in, I think it was January. I spoke to her yesterday to ask her if she knew that we were talking about a vote on the policy, the exact policy for which she appeared before us and complained, and she had no clue that this was on our agenda. She was waiting for a Subcommittee meeting, which hasn't happened. The ward counselor contacted me about this, had no idea that this was on our agenda and that we were going to vote on it without a Subcommittee meeting. And I can go on, and it's going to result in a five-to-one vote in favor of this policy, but at least for the record, I am a believer in process, and at least for the record, and for hopefully the hearing of my colleagues and friends. I don't, I don't take this lightly, but I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed that we didn't do this right. It's too late now. We're into the 11th hour. We do need to vote on a policy because it's appropriate for families, it's appropriate for our staff members to have time to process applications and prepare routes, and for people to come up with funds to pay for these things. Maybe next year, maybe we can do this a different way next year.
On the motion, Mr. Amico?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the chair of the committee. Mr. Hockman, I applaud your drive for these people. I really do. Firstly, I wish we could, we could put more buses on the road. I wish everyone who wanted a bus ride to school could get one. But we just sat through budget meeting, public budget meeting, and unfortunately, we do have fiduciary responsibility to our taxpayers as well, and we don't have unlimited funds. We should, we should be the NBA, we should be the NFL, you know, guys should free throw shit, be making 22 million. Our teachers should. We should have buses for every kid, but the reality is we don't, and that's the only reason why I'm voting against this. Not because I have anything against the good people who want buses for their kids, the kids who want the bus ride. We just don't have the funding, and that's sad, but we are a microcosm of this country. That's where education is right now, and that's all people can know, but no can all of it.
Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When this was put into the Quality and Standards Subcommittee, if everyone will recall, I did recommend that it be brought to the full school committee because the full school committee would need to vote on it anyway. During that time, I have been working with Mr. Stanton and Mrs. Breznerhan. They have gone above and beyond to answer all of the questions I have asked, and I am completely prepared this evening to bring all of that information to you. And I am going to do that right now. And I do resent the terminology of lack of transparency because that is not the case. The chairperson of every Subcommittee and the Subcommittee members decide how to run those Subcommittee meetings. My Subcommittee, Quality and Standards Subcommittee, which I am very, very proud and very grateful to be the chairperson of, was told how to run a meeting, was told how to notify people. That was out of the usual realm of anything that has been done on this school committee. Right now, I will tell you that I requested from Mr. Stanton and Mrs. Breznerhan, the cost of busing every eligible student within one-half a mile of their school. Mr. Stanton, would you happen to have that figure with you? I'm sorry. And first off, just to give him a chance, I'm sorry, to give him a chance... And first off, just to give him a chance, I'm sorry, to give him a chance, I will tell you that I also requested, what would it cost if we did the state minimum presently, so that everyone understands PBD does bus our students better than we are required? We do. And we make a great effort to do that. If every person who wanted to be bused in this district were to take a bus, I would be sitting here recommending to you that all the transportation fees be increased Presently, as you heard, the payment of fees covers less than a third of what it costs to run the buses. If you want to increase the bus range, I believe you're going to see that we would have to increase bus fees, and they would be very, very high. So, Mr. Stanton, if you could, what was it going to cost to bus every eligible student within a half a mile of their schools? And I think we broke it down by elementary, middle, and high school. I don't know if you have that, but if you do, go right ahead.
Through the chair. I have, I do have that information, I have it in different places.
Right.
But to give a macro version right now, if we were to provide, and these are rough numbers, and we actually did this with me and Dawn in the last three weeks, so Eileen did not help with this one. If we were to provide every student that lived within a half a mile, we were estimating the cost to be 2.6 million. If we were to do everyone within a mile, it would be 1.9 million. And if we were to do everyone within a one-and-a-half miles, it would be 1.6 million.
On top of what we currently have?
That would be the total.
Oh, the total, I'm sorry, okay.
And let me just pull up that spreadsheet, I think I can get that for you.
While Mr. Stanton's looking that up, there is one other item that I would like to bring to this attention of the school committee. I do believe that we have to discuss the pay-to-ride program. That, again, has been a very convenient method for people who are willing to bring their child to a bus stop and pay, so that they can take a bus if we have space. It's a matter of convenience on both sides. I will be honest with you, when I saw the list of the number of pay-to-ride riders and the number of people who pay, it's very concerning to me, because there are significant numbers of people who do not pay because of hardship. So what started out to be not only a convenience, but it was going to be a revenue, certainly not making a profit, but it was going to result in some money to offset that convenience, that is not happening right now. And I think that we need to look at that, but honestly did not bring it forward tonight because it wasn't pertinent or germane to the actual need to give people the ability to actually decide whether they're going to take buses to receive this letter and be on notice about the actual bus fee for the regular transportation. It's a side issue, and I do think we're going to need to look at that.
Mr. Olympios, do you want to add something?
Yeah. So these figures that we just talked about, 2.6 million within a half mile, is that in addition to?
No.
No?
It would double, so it would double from 1.3 to 2.6 through the chair.
So currently, it's 1.3, and now it would be 2.6 within a half mile. Okay, so that's the current cost?
Current cost is 1.3.
Okay, thank you.
And we get about a $300,000 offset.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, Dr. Levine, Dr. Levine or Ms. Martek, do you know what the state requirement is for transportation? I know we are not required to transport high school students.
Correct.
Unless they live over two miles, or actually...
I don't think we're required to
No.
...transport high school students at all.
Neither do I. I think it's K through six only.
Through the chair, we're not required to, from seventh grade.
Seventh grade, exactly.
I can't answer how much it would cost if we just transported the students that we were required to. It would cost approximately $420,000.
About a third, right? About a third of what we...
Can you repeat that, Jared?
Sure.
That's for what?
So K through six students over two miles that we are required to transport is approximately 432 students. We would still need to transport St. John's Middle School, sixth grade only. That amount would be $420,000, and that's approximate.
So PBD does go above and beyond the state requirement. When the parents did approach the school committee requesting a bus for their student, our policy is that we don't add stops in the middle of the year. That has been longstanding. And the fact that they were coming to us requesting this transportation, if we were to change the boundaries of current transportation, the costs, as you can see, are significant, and we are already paying a significant amount of money to bus students. There may be other questions folks have for Mr. Stanton. We had worked quite a bit on numbers, and then due to a vacation...
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Hockman?
Thank you. And I really didn't want to do this here, and I don't want to do this here, because it's not fair to Mr. Stanton. I can ask him a series of questions about his methodology, and the methodology he and Dawn went through, and how they calculated and tabulated these numbers. It's not fair to him, and I'm not going to put him through that. I can tell you, I still don't know the information. I don't know how transporting every student within a half a mile or beyond a half a mile is going to double the transportation budget. What I do know is I've, this district does go beyond the state minimum. I've never questioned that, I've never said we didn't, and I never said that we shouldn't. I'm just saying that there are, because of the size of the city, and because we only have one middle school and one high school, we have buses, we have more buses than we need for the number of children that are being transported. We have more buses than we need because of the time concerns about how long we want to keep a child on a bus, and we need to get the school, kids to school in a timely manner, and the way our three-tiered system operates, we have buses that have empty seats. And I don't know why it's that difficult to discuss adding a stop on Lowell Street when nine buses with 10 empty seats or 15 empty seats each are passing by the same intersection. And that is the conversation I was hoping took place, and it didn't. And I don't know how filling those 90 seats, if that's what it is, adds to the cost of transportation. What I see that as, is we add user fees, which reduces the amount of subsidy that the school department pays for transportation. We pay a subsidy for transportation. I don't dispute that. All I'm saying is that I would have liked to have the conversation with people who were interested in filling empty seats on the bus, and maybe that's what our policy would have amounted to, is that if there are empty seats on a bus that is going, that is already traveling past a street corner, we can use that as a bus stop. But that opportunity didn't happen, and I appreciate the work that Mr. Stanton did, I appreciate the work that Ms. Dunn did, I appreciate the work that Dawn did, I appreciate that we're short people in the Transportation Department now, and people are strained there, both emotionally and physically and workload, and I appreciate that we need to get a policy passed for the reasons I stated before. But I don't know, I don't know that adding bus riders increases the cost of transportation. I don't know that it doesn't. I'm not saying that anybody here is wrong, I'm just saying that Jared shouldn't, Mr. Stanton shouldn't have to be looking for that information here. That information should have been presented at a Subcommittee meeting, minimum it should have been on our agenda.
Mrs. Dunn?
If I could, Mr. Veer, I can tell you that I was very, it's very interesting to find out how transportation works. The conversations were always full of all kinds of information, and I'll give you an example. This really amazed me. It was really, really surprising, talking with Ms. Breznerhan. She explained to me how, in order to decide routes and how we pick up students, for an example, and she did use the park-to-circle example, because everybody was talking about how there are buses that drive by there, why couldn't one of those buses stop and pick up the students? And she explained that in order to decide which bus travels which route and how it picks up and discharges students, some of the thought process would be, well, if you put the students on the first bus to go down Lowell Street, it could stop and drop them off there. She couldn't do that, because it would back up all the buses behind that bus on Lowell Street, and because of her work with the Police Department, when she is setting routes, she actually does speak with the police because of the dispersment of the crossing guards as well as traffic flow. Then the decision begins, well, maybe you have to put those students on the last bus that's going to come down Lowell Street and head south. But that bus might not have room. So she would have to look at every, she had, she looked at every bus, not the way we would about, you know, fill the seats, pick up the kids, and be on your way. I was really, really surprised and awed of the depth of research that goes into setting up the routes and deciding which bus takes which children, because when they leave the high school and they have to get to the Higgins, it's really very, very intricate. There were really a lot of moving pieces to this. I know that she and Mr. Stanton were looking at populations. They looked at every school, how many students attend, how many students take the bus, and also at clusters of students, for example, up at the North Shore Shopping Center, oh, the mall, the North Shore Mall, the apartment complexes around there, how many students come from those areas, trying to locate your center for a bus stop or for a bus route. And that all goes in, it isn't just the monetary decisions, it's actually the deployment of the buses, the routes, the traffic in the city, and the timing for all three levels. So a lot of those discussions went on, and I know that Mrs. Breznerhan spoke with Mr. Stanton quite a bit, they worked very closely together, on a lot of the requests that I submitted to them. And those were ongoing. I was talking with them, receiving results, and then unfortunately, we ran out of time.
Okay, I think everybody has stated their feelings on this. Mrs. Carpenter, did you want to?
Thank you. I'm just wondering if it's possible to move forward, which I think we have to anyways with this letter, once we receive all of the forms back from the parents and we set our bus routes, we could revisit this once we understand the routes that the buses are taking. I'm not very clear on empty seats, how many empty seats we actually have, you know, which new routes, we have new routes all of the time, because kids graduate, new kids move in, so the routes are going to change, and revisit this after those are established and see if there is any room for that type of movement. You know, my thing on empty buses is, I'm concerned that they're not really empty, it's just, you know, a high school student got their license, or they're playing sports. So I want to make sure an empty bus is really an empty bus, see how many seats are available, revisit this once we know the new routes, and go from there.
We do have a motion on the table now, and I think maybe that's a motion...
We can finish that motion, and then, yeah.
All right, on the motion, everybody, understand the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter, did you want to?
Do you want it in a motion, or?
If you would like to make it, if not, that can just be held.
Mr. Hockman, is that something that's through the chair, interest of you?
Whatever it's going to, whatever we, whatever the committee decides, I think it's a great idea that you're suggesting. However we decide to proceed, it'll be fine with me.
I think we should make a motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to revisit this once all routes and applications are completed.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Mrs. Dunn, anything on MASC official delegate form?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, MASC has requested that we appoint an official delegate for the delegate convention that takes place in November. That member would be voting on the resolutions that are presented at that resolution convention.
Mr. Hockman?
If I may, through the chair to Ms. Dunn. Ms. Dunn, you historically attend that for us.
I do.
And would you be interested in this?
Yes, I would.
I would nominate Beverly Griffin Dunn to be the delegate from, is it PBD or from the region?
PBD.
From PBD, PBD School, Public Schools.
Motion made by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Arnotis to appoint Beverly Dunn. Thank you, Beverly, for offering. All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn, for that report. Public participation, is anyone in the audience that would like to speak? The opportunity is now...
Please no, please no.
Superintendent's report, Dr. Levine, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First thing I'd like to do is to congratulate one of our first graders at the center school. His name is Jaden Ambanga. He participated, as did 2,500 other students statewide, in the MSBA My Ideal School Contest, which is a drawing and an essay as to the kind of school that he would like to see both physically and inside, and then talk about what could make schools better. Out of 2,500 students, they picked 11 winners, and Jaden is one of them, and I think that's outstanding. Congratulations to Jaden and his family. They will be honored at the State House on May, on June 20th, I think. I'm not sure of the exact date, I'll get it to you, but I just wanted to bring to your attention that that's a wonderful accomplishment, and certainly a feather in PBD's cap to have such a talented...
Please no, please no.
Superintendent's report, Dr. Levine, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First thing I'd like to do is to congratulate one of our first graders at the Center School. His name is Jaden Ambanga. He participated, as did 2,500 other students statewide, in the MSBA My Ideal School Contest, which is a drawing and an essay as to the kind of school that he would like to see both physically and inside, and then talk about what could make schools better. Out of 2,500 students, they picked 11 winners, and Jaden is one of them. And I think that's outstanding. Congratulations to Jaden and his family. They will be honored at the State House on May, on June 20th, I think. I'm not sure of the exact date, I'll get it to you. But I just wanted to bring to your attention that that's a wonderful accomplishment, and certainly a feather in PBD's cap to have such a talented young first grader win that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
That is wonderful. That is a, that is a huge contest, and I would like to ask that we keep Jaden's name in the front of our foreheads, and in the hope that when MSBA decides to look at the Center School, that Jaden be allowed to sit in and have some input.
That would be great. He will be through the chair on their magazine, he and his drawing.
That's wonderful.
I'd also like to recognize teacher Lisa Keen, who was awarded the Massachusetts Women in Athletics Distinguished Service Award. As you know, Lisa is one of our finest physical education teachers, and she most richly deserves this award. So congratulations to Lisa and her family as well. In your packet, you have an FKO... As I had suggested to the director, let's plant the seeds last year, and you'll see more fruit this year, and we certainly did. So, FKO is doing quite well with us. And I think that's it. Dunn, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Levine. We do not have any written communications today, so we'll go on to subcommittee reports. I will take a quick run through. Education, anything, Mr. Hockman?
I'll just be very quick. I wanted to report, well, we didn't have a meeting, but I wanted to report that I've received notification from Pamela Sudori, who is our vision specialist, district vision specialist, that there's a publication that is being produced by the Association for Mass, Massachusetts Educators for Students with Visual Impairments. That's easier said as A.M.E.S.V.I. And in that publication, there are two PBD students who are being recognized, a high school student as well as a Brown School student. And if I can ask Dr. Levine, or maybe Ms. Murtagh, if we can get a copy of that publication in our next packet.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Finance, Mrs. Cappan?
Thank you. The finance Subcommittee is in active negotiations with all unions at this time. We also met this evening as a committee of the whole to give everyone updates on union negotiations. We also have a couple of contracts to approve that we voted for in executive session, so I'd like to make a motion. The first contract is to approve for the new business manager, Mr. Thomas LaFleur, per the contracts that are in front of you.
A three-year contract?
Yes, three-year contract.
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Cappan for approval, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call vote, please?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And, Mr. Chairman, we also have Ms. Murtagh's contract to approve that we already voted
for in executive session. It is also for a three-year contract, so I'd like to make a motion to approve that contract with the terms that are before you.
Second. For the motion by Mrs. Cappan for approval of the contract, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call vote, please?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. That is all, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cappan. School safety, Mr. Olympio?
We had a, we had a meeting scheduled for tonight, but I think we're going to reschedule that to another time and day in the near future.
Thank you, I appreciate that. We did have some representative, we had Chief Griffin here, Tim Haley, our facilities director, as well as a representative, I believe, from Cops Inc., they had to leave due to various circumstances, so we will quickly reschedule that, so thank you.